Oh man, and then my kids are like seven and nine. They're just like almost adult sized humans and they're adorable, but they don't have the cute little pose or the face. So I miss it. I'm gonna mute now. Don't worry, everyone.
Welcome to Baby Kim to our first board meeting. And with that, we are going to enter into our work sessions as I see everybody on here. And our first item on our agenda is to discuss our reopening.
All right. Thank you. And welcome. I feel like we've got eight people on the board now. But this is a this is a treat. Congratulations. All right, Travis, if you would go ahead and present, please.
I think we have Kelly on the line as our DJ tonight.
Okay. Well, that's been pulled up. Just as a reminder, I believe everybody is aware that new metrics came out recently. And we've been hearing about these metrics for a little while. And so we were anxious to get them and to see what it meant for us. The ironic timing of the metrics is that we we received these new metrics at a time where Washington County and the rest of this or a lot of the state is experiencing a surge in cases of a number of positive cases for COVID-19. So that was unfortunate timing, but nonetheless, we want to make sure that we presented the the new metrics to you as well as some recommendations as to where we go from here. And you're going to see quite a bit of information presented here. You're going to see, I mean, start us off with three recommendations and then following those three recommendations. There's going to be a lot of information that really helps you understand what drove us towards these recommendations. And then at the end of the at the end of our presentation here and at the end of our discussion time, we of course are going to ask you to make a decision regarding these recommendations. We know that I'll be able to share with you tonight a number of what other what other districts are doing and what they're thinking as well as some timelines that have been driving this for us. And we know that our not only our family members, but our staff members have been anxious to get a decision on this and so they can do some planning as well. All right, Kelly, would you advance one, please? And one more. So whenever we enter into a big decision, especially when it comes to what the instructional model is going to look like, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we continue to drive back to our values and what are priorities to meeting the needs of our students. So so there's five bullet points here that I just want to go over really quickly. And as we started diving into these metrics and putting the recommendations together, we wanted everyone to know, you to know that we want we want students back in in-person instruction as soon as possible, as soon as it's safe to do so. We believe that when we are in person with students, and that's where really the magic happens. That's where this where the teachers can really capitalize on the relationships that they build, going to allow for our best instruction. So that that's the first thing I want to say is that we want students back as soon as we possibly can. We also understand that there's been a disproportionate impact that COVID-19 has on the on the learning of our students. And we want to make sure that with its time to do so and when it's safe to do so, that we start that by we start that process by bringing our most impacted students back, our most vulnerable students back first. And that to be as determined by the data that we've been able to collect as well as feedback from staff members as well. We are always going to prioritize equity and we are always going to focus first on the safety of the students that we are serving and understanding that safety in the broader sense, not only is their physical well-being, but their social, social, emotional well-being, their mental health as well. With all of that said, we are always going to fall back on the guidelines that have been provided by the state. And we're always going to make sure that we're following the safety protocols that that have been outlined. All right, Kelly. All right. So I'm going to start here by just going over the three recommendations that we're making for you. And then Travis and Dale are going to go into a little more depth following this. And then I'll be back a few slides later to continue the conversation. So the first recommendation is grades three through 12 remains in comprehensive distance learning through the end of semester one. That's the that will be our first recommendation. The second recommendation is that we continue to prepare for the possibility that the metrics may change enough that we can bring back our pre-K through second graders. Really don't anticipate that happening anywhere before mid-January, and that has a lot to do with where we know the metrics are and the direction they're currently headed, as well as the transition timeline, that the transition weeks that we're going to need, as well as is unique to November and December, the natural breaks in the calendar and what that would mean and where it would make sense. If we feel like we're able to do that by mid-December, we would communicate to our families to make sure that they understand that that is definitely a possibility. I just want to reiterate here. The metrics being where they are now, this is not possible for us. Pre-K through second grade is currently not possible. We do though want to leave the door open in case the metrics were to swing in a positive direction within a short period of time. The final recommendation has to do with the number of students that are participating in limited in-person instruction. And you've likely seen the guidelines and the criteria around that. But we want to, we want to leave that door open as well so that as we are able to identify safe ways for more students to come back and in person, then we can continue to explore that with our teachers and find a way to do that. So we want to, we want to increase the number of students that we currently have in limited in person. So Mark, if you would hold off just for three more slides and then we'll break for one second because there's going to be some there'll be an opportunity to ask some questions at the end of that. And then there'll be a whole other set of slides that may even get to the question that you're asking. All right. So those are the three recommendations. And Travis, I believe you have the next slide.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, everybody. Just to go a little deeper with the first recommendation. Once you see the new metrics that were released today, you'll you'll be able to do the same math, which is really that we won't be able to come back sooner than the semester for students in grades three through 12. The new guidance from ODE and the Health Authority tells us to be measured and thoughtful and somewhat incremental in bringing students back. So not only do we have metrics that are headed in the wrong direction, but what we'll need to do first is bring back students pre-K through two and then learn how to do that with a smaller group of students and then add more students at higher grade levels, which is explicitly called out in in the guidance. Next one's for Dale.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Number two is continue to explore the possibility of bringing PK through second grade back. As you recall, we staffed the kinder first and second grades in a way that would allow us to bring them back hopefully in one cohort and more frequently. As Travis mentioned, the guidelines do encourage bringing back our youngest learners. And we've talked throughout this process that teaching our students online when they are five, six, seven is very difficult. Their attention spans as well as the support they need and just is inequitable. As we continue to focus on third grade reading, we know that being able to read by third grade is kind of a national benchmark and and we as a system have identified reading in Spanish or English is key for our students. And we know that our youngest learners have been impacted with not having the support and access that they need for consistent daily instruction at their rate and level. And so that's just a priority for our district. And being able to bring PK through second grade back would allow us to plan and implement our practices for return to school on a small scale and preparation for bringing all of our students back K-12. And that would include the protocols for being in the building as well as transportation, lunch, et cetera. So we really feel like it gives us an opportunity to see what it's like to have people back in building. Recommendation three. The next slide is to continue to explore the opportunity to increase that limited in-person instruction. We know that from an equity lens, the stay-at-home order and then the comprehensive distance learning education has had a disproportionate impact on some students, our school teams, whether that's our student support teams, care teams, attendance teams, we're really aware of which kids are being impacted more so than other students. And we know that having the opportunity to bring them in would really make a difference. The connections and relationships that we have with our kids are important, whether we look at their academics, attendance, engagement, as we continue to focus on their mastery of standards, we also see this evident in their grades that some students are more greatly impacted. We began talking with our principals last week about patterns that we were looking for across our district to see if there were some recommendations that they would have by level. And so just having a brief conversation, we identified that we definitely as a system would look at K-3 and grades four through six for helping kids who are continuing to limit it in person experiences for students who were below grade level, who had less than 50% attendance, or who were not having the support or access at home to engage in learning at high rates. In middle and high school, there were some patterns, but some different priorities, specifically looking at students who we haven't been able to contact, as well as students who had really low attendance, students who at the end of the quarter had one or more Fs in their report cards, and then just students who have expressed the need to have more supports with social emotional learning, or they've had trouble paying attention, some behavioral issues. So I think that there's enough perspective out in our schools that we would be able to create lists of students that we might bring in in cohorts if we continued to dig in and potentially increase the opportunity to have more limited in-person instruction.
I think this might be a good time to pause before we get into the metrics to answer any questions.
Mark, did you have?
Yes, please. Today was today's the day we started, was it 30 or 50? My recollection is 30, but it might have been 50. Offering them limited in-person, is that is that accurate? Today, tomorrow?
We'll have, we have staff training right now. I believe the date is in February, I want to say the 20th, when we start with a cohort of 20 students who will get limited in-person instruction.
And we had offered it to some subset and we didn't know how many, when we last talked, there was discussion with offering it to X amount of kids and then see how many, I'm curious, how many do we offer and how many accepted?
Elaine, do you want to provide a little detail regarding the criteria and then get into the numbers potentially?
I'd be happy to. So we went ahead and looked at all of the students that we have with IEP, trying to come up with a reasonable criteria for them. And we really decided that the students who because of their disability could not, this learning of all online, be the group that we would work with first because they just really, really need that support. And so once we identified students, we had about 40 students, we identified and about 20 accepted. And it's possible then in the next couple of weeks, more could accept. But that is 40 is how many we offered it to and we'll be starting on November 18th. Nope, that's not right. November 23rd, in order to just kind of bring them in, there'll be two days a week, there'll be a few different cohorts of 10 students each and we'll see what we can do. And then we'll see if time goes on, if it seems a little bit more appropriate to add a few more students and expand that criteria a bit, but we'd like to start with this group first.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I thought it was sometime in November and I thought it was about 40, 30, something like that. So but but roughly half said yes and half declined.
For now, it's an open offer, but for now, yes.
And when is the, I guess to Jackie's question in the chat, when is the athletic opportunities returning or you know athletics and extracurricular? And is it affected by that? Because it's supposed to be outside, so they're not indoor gathering. So that was this week, right?
Yeah, that was, that's correct. Casey can go over the timeline a little better, but we do, Washington County was added to the pause list. And there this week, actually, I'm going to let Casey talk about what this week looks like and why it doesn't currently impact that.
Yes. Thanks, Mike. Yeah. So this week is primarily the, we're going to call it an onboarding week where coaches and advisors are organizing their cohorts, they're going over rules and expectations. That may be meeting onsite to go over the logistics of where they're going to be at on the campus. But the real like go live date is Monday, the 16th.
Okay, so we got coaches and everybody and does the pause impact our cohort? So I think their cohorts are going to be 25. Is it still the number we're targeting?
Yeah, our cohorts kind of vary by team or group.
Sure. No, no more than 25.
Yeah, that's where that's that's where we're planning for. And I don't believe that the new guidance that came out because it was specifically targeted mainly for indoor groupings and gatherings and some things on restaurants and bowling alleys, that kind of stuff. Us being solely outside and maintaining the the distancing and mask requirements all the times, I don't believe that that'll impact our our plans.
Mark, we had a conversation with Washington County Public Health today and we specifically asked this question about if we are planning on offering these training opportunities outdoors, what is their comfort level with that? And and the notion that it's outdoors increases the comfort level level considerably. And with us following the safety protocols, we believe that we can still move in that direction. We've got other districts across the county that are doing the same thing. Some some districts are already moving towards indoor practices. We're we're not doing that at this point. I shouldn't say practices, indoor training at this point. And we're sticking with outdoors.
Thanks.
Question from Jackie and then Chan.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chan.
Yeah. So my question is around the recommendation number two. So continuing to prepare for the possibility of students in grades pre-K through two returning in person in mid-January. Now, if we, I know that it says that it's a possibility, it will be communicated no later than mid-December. Will that also be the case if it is, if the metric you to not look so great, will we make a decision by mid-December saying no, you know, returning mid-January is absolutely not a possibility. That way we can allow for more planning to happen. So us making a decision by mid-December either way, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. We will, we will make a decision either way. And and the reasoning for that, of course, is there's the the two weeks worth of metrics that have to be headed in the right direction. There's those natural breaks in there that occur until the early January. And then we need, of course, the transition time for our teachers. So we will make a decision by by mid-December.
Thank you.
All right, Travis, do you want to continue? So just there's, so we can build a grid.
I'll do it. Yep. Kelly, thank you for being the driver tonight. So this is our crooked path through building a hybrid blueprints over the summer and then moving into CDL in the fall. We've been planning pre-K three and now talking pre-K two as we look forward through these new metrics at what's possible. We want to bring students back safely when we can. That said, we just discussed some of the athletics and activities, things that are going on in some of the limited in-person that we're pursuing, even despite the unpromising metrics at this point. So we're just going to keep updating this slide. Keep going, please, Kelly. One more. So just this afternoon, we got the new posting of this two-week look back for Washington County as well as the other counties. So if you look closely here, there's a table at the top that shows Washington County metrics from the weeks of October 25th through November 7th that just posted. And those two weeks added together in cases for 100,000, we go 189.8. And we're at now at 10.2% test positivity rate in those two weeks. So you can see that we're in Orange County. That means that if our metrics are headed in a positive direction, that we'll have, we should be talking to our local health authority about going back pre-K through two. If they're going in a negative direction, we should be talking to our local health authority about staying in CDL. Or if we were in person, we would be wanting to go back to CDL as the metrics swing the wrong direction. You can see that we're now in the red as far as the case positivity rate. So at this point, we would not go back to a hybrid model based on the metrics. Now, when we asked this morning what the the trend is, click one more forward, please, Kelly. The county folks are referencing this four-county area. It's the the tri-county area plus Yamhill County. And they're using this weekly cases per 100,000 graphic to show that we were down in the 50s a couple of weeks ago, but then up to 60, then 80, and now 132 cases per 100,000 in this four-county area. And so what they're telling right now is negative. And they're trying to begin a campaign around the fact that we never got out of phase one. And then if people have gotten lax, we need to double down on our efforts to socially distance and to restrict activities like gatherings, gathering with multiple groups of folks, accessing indoor entertainment opportunities and restaurants and bars. They're very concerned right now that the trend is getting steeper in the in the wrong direction in our area. So I think this is an important graphic for us to understand as we talk about our plans. Can you advance one more slide, please? On our website, Beth and her team have been updating the this grid that shows you where we are with colors. Now you'd see us stay in orange for cases per 100,000 and this will turn red this week for our best positivity rate. Go one more slide, please. And again, this, I'm sure you've all looked at the guidance and the table that's put out by ODE and Oregon Health Authority, but these are the zones that we now consider ourselves in. So we're we're in the orange. We'd like to be trending back toward yellow, which would allow us to bring back some of our younger learners. And their counties near us, if you go back and look at that map that are green, where there's a green light to bring students back in a hybrid model or a day-to-day model. Please click one more slide forward. And so this will give you a little more explanation of that trend toward the negative or toward the positive. So if we're ramping up cases, we need to be working at keeping folks safe and having high-quality CDL. If we're getting better in terms of the case numbers in our county and in our area, we should be looking toward that yellow zone and preparing to create a transition back to school, especially pre-K two in Hillsborough. All right, one more slide forward. And we've adapted this chart a little bit, even though, as Mike referenced, we're doing a two-week look back as far as the metrics go. It doesn't mean that we're in a two-week transition plan. We'll look at natural breaks in the calendar and we'll look at our preparedness with PPE and protocols to go back safely and create that timeline to train staff, train students and families, providing information about transportation and nutrition services and how to move in and out of the building safely. And then we'll create a transition time for staff to get back into classrooms and for families to get prepared with their students. Happy to answer any questions, I think, at this point about the metrics themselves or the math. Also, if I missed anything, team, please chime in.
Mark has a question.
And then wait before I hit that to see if anybody else wanted to go first for a change. But all right. So that is the transition time for students considered classroom time? And what do we anticipate? How many days away from instruction would students be as the staff transitions? I don't think it's fair to be asking staff to be conducting distance learning and preparing their classrooms. So like, so how many days do we expect? And you know, then it's a transition time considered classroom time? And are we bumping up against any of the OD requirements for a number of days?
Right. We should, we should be good with the number of days. But I can tell you that that is a conversation that we are going to be engaging in with HEA. We we received a letter that requires us to begin a bargaining process with HEA. And that bargaining process or the the letter outlined the concerns that are really really pretty universal to everybody when it comes to safety concerns. So when we return to work, what's that going to look like? Who's it going to involve? And how's it going to happen? That those really are, that gets at the heart of what the concerns are or where the clarification is wanted. And with how is this going to impact our workload? And Mark, an example that you just gave is a good one. And if we are requiring a distance learning to occur, well, at the same time, asking people to set up their classrooms, that's not going to work. And then the other issues are safety. So we are just now putting together, we had a meeting this afternoon where we really outlined the process by which we'll start these discussions. And we anticipate starting these discussions with hopefully within the next week or so. So a lot more details and a lot more conversation to come around that. But that is one of the issues that we're aware of, needs to have some details put to it.
And and as we consider the activities and athletics returning at the high school level, is there any talk of that for middle school? I mean, my my kids played middle school band quite a bit. That's a smaller band than Century High School Band. So are we, are we talking about providing those activity and athletics opportunities for middle school students or no?
Waiting to see if Casey was going to unmute there. I can, I can give you the, we were starting with high school and then and even at the high school, pretty limited to begin with. We want to make sure that the protocols are effective and everything's working well. And then we can begin that transition process to include more people. So and that could include more activities, it could include a greater opportunity, it could include indoor activities. And then we would work our way down from there. Casey, anything to add to that?
No, Mike, that's exactly right. We're we're using this first phase and then really hopefully a plan goal is for the end of the month, first part of December, may have the opportunity to enter into some of our indoor facilities and opening up even some of our outdoor out facilities for community partners, you know, and that kind of thing. The majority of our middle school activities are not necessarily run by the district, although they may be run by you know, district folks and advisors and that kind of stuff. It's not necessarily a funded or a district position. So they rely on district facilities to be able to be used, to be open. So we're going towards that goal. We're just not ready to commit yet.
Thanks. I got more questions, but I'll let everybody else go and circle back.
Let's get Lisa and then Yadira.
Thank you. My question is about the bargaining piece of this, Mike. So first, do we know if there are districts around us who have had this request? How long do we think that this is going to take? And is this something that the HEA bargaining group needs to ratify with their membership before we can return? That's my first question. I have a different question, but I'll do what Mark did and just ask that one and then come back.
There, there is another district in Washington County where this has occurred. And I don't, I don't know if it's something that is going to occur on a broader scale throughout the state, but I wouldn't be surprised. With the with the new metrics, I think that I triggered a number of questions from associations. And so I wouldn't be surprised if that happens. Right now, including us, there's two districts that I'm aware of. Regarding the timeline, it depends on which attorney you talk to. So there's, there's I will, I'll tell you that it's anywhere from 90 days to 150 days where that bargaining window would be available. I can tell you also that we, in our conversations with HEA over the weekend and today, our goal is to get started right away and to start those conversations and the problem solving immediately. So that's, that's what I can tell you. There was another question there and I'm forgetting what it was.
It was, does this, is this something that their membership has to vote on? There were two. And also, does this have to be resolved before we can begin this transition plan?
So we can, I'm gonna I'm not 100% sure what HEA's rules call for. I believe it does have to be ratified, but I'm not 100% sure. So I'll have to get clarification on that. I don't know if they have to have the entire membership vote on that, or if that's something that the bargaining team can do. I would guess it's the whole membership, but but I don't want to answer that just yet because I need to get clarification on that. And in terms of the planning process, we can go ahead and we can continue these plans. We know that when it comes to not only staff, but when it community members, they're expecting that when we return, it is a smooth process and that we've, we've done the planning necessary to make it a success. So we will continue in this planning process. Part of this planning process is to continue those conversations. Part of this planning process is to continue those conversations with H E A and H C U and to, um, make sure that, um, the issues that people have concerns about are being addressed. So we will continue all of that through this process.
There we go. Um, so originally we're talking about getting K through third grade in, and now it's K through second grade. Why was, why was in this different one, we decided to not include third grade? In that planning?
Yeah. Would you take that one, please?
Sure. Um, I think, uh, as we start talking about, um, trying to make sure that we could get the transportation for K through three or pre K through three, if we support some of, um, those students as well as, um, making sure that we had protocols in place for safety. And we know we also have to make sure we have buses to feed everyone. We didn't feel at this time that we had enough information to, um, be confident that we could transport and handle the protocol for K three. We felt like, um, K two, we knew that we could do. But we're not sure, you know, as you know, we're gathering information from our community to see who might be returning to school. So we always want to err on the side that most of our kids are coming back. And so at this time, we feel comfortable being able to bring K two back, but not K three without more information.
Will, um, will we kind of keep an eye out to kind of say like, okay, now we have K through second grade in person and, you know, we're handling that. Okay. And it looks like there's, we have enough bandwidth to write in, include the third grade. Will we be able to look at that and, and act on that if it's possible?
I'd say definitely. I mean, that, that's the plan to try to get as many kids in as possible. And again, with that third grade benchmark, we know that our, our youngest learners were impacted last spring and continue to be impacted disproportionately. So I think that's, that's the goal. And I-
Preschool through two.
Okay. Um, and do our plans include, I'm sure they do, what the process is if there is a COVID case, positive COVID case when we return to, in-person learning and what would that look like? Or do we, are we still working on that?
There is, and we're actually tracking that now with the health authority. They sometimes will help us identify when there's a case in our community and sometimes will help Washington County identify when there's a case in our community. There are protocols that we have to have in place with our district nurses and with the Washington County Health Authority to report those things and do contact tracing. So there's a couple of different scenarios. There's one where, you know, within a cohort, somebody has exposure and would be quarantined and that cohort would still possibly be able to continue in school. There's another where a person in a cohort has a confirmed case and therefore we would quarantine as a cohort. And then you can play that up through like outbreak scenarios where you have multiple cases in a single school where we might, close a school based on the health authorities guidance or as a county, go back up into this two hundred range. And we could foreseeably get into a spot where we return to school as a county and then fall back into C D L. And those are all scenarios that are played out in the O D E guidance and the Oregon Health Authority guidance for us.
Thank you.
Hey, Eric, I did want to clarify, I did just, I, I received a message from H E A leadership. And, uh, the answer to the question that Lisa posed about, does that need to be voted on by, um, all of the members is, um, it does need to be ratified by the whole group and the way that would be, be determined is by a majority of those who are voting.
Lisa, did you have any other follow-up questions and I'll move to Mark again?
I do. So just, I want to clarify, maybe, maybe you didn't answer it all the way, or maybe I didn't understand it all the way, or maybe it's a mix of both. Mike, I would like to know if this needs to be resolved before we can begin this transition. So if the process to bargain takes ninety to a hundred and twenty days, does that time need to happen first before students can come back? Because if so, that's beyond the date that we're talking about potentially beginning, assuming that magically all the metrics are exactly where they need to be, um, for the sake of argument. So, um, that's my first question. My second question was around the end of this arrow that we have here, the transition time for staff and the transition time for students. Why do we need both of those and can they not happen at the same time to make the arrow shorter? Those are my two questions.
Travis, would you address the second one?
Yeah. Um, first, the arrow isn't scientifically based. It's not exactly linear like, like this line shows it to be. I think there could be some things that happen. Uh, for example, we're planning some videos that would show students and parents and staff how to exit a bus, get in a front door with hand sanitizer and a temperature check, get to class and settle in. And we would do that asynchronously. We would show that video to students, maybe as part of their instructional day, during part of that green arrow. It could be that we're also doing, um, training for staff on how to do health checks and how to, um, monitor lunch and recess activities, et cetera, during that same green part of the arrow. So it may be overlapping. I know there's some specific concerns about time for teachers to get in their classrooms and set up their hardware and get prepared. And that would definitely be part of the staff transition week. But I'm with you. I think we can do a lot of preparing students and families during that same week. Uh, we just wanted folks to know that we have time here to do right. I also imagine that, um, part of that transition week for students is parents dropping off at Kinder for the first day, which happens. I was having a flashback about Kinder drop-off day, um, as a former elementary school guy. And that's going to happen. So we're going to definitely need to have a week where there may actually be in-person instruction during that student transition week, but we need to set up for that first week back, like we would any first week back, uh, even though students are somewhat in the swing.
I'd just like to add on to that real quick. And I think the other important thing, obviously, we're always worried about the loss of direct instruction time. And, um, you know, with our new literacy adoption, the math pieces, I think, we would confidently be able to have groups of teachers, um, work together to plan some things for students to do asynchronously while teachers are transitioning. You know, the, the beauty of like a, a new curriculum is it's, people are usually pretty paced together because they're all kind of working through. So I think we could, uh, get some teacher experts or, uh, work with our TOSs and P L Cs to kind of help us as a system, create some resources for kids and families. So that's not lost time.
All right, Lisa, regarding your question about, um, could we implement this, uh, with that, uh, prior to the either ninety or a hundred and fifty days? We could do that. Um, the risk that you take is that you could have an unfair labor practice. And, and the reason that that could happen is that, um, working conditions are outlined in the contract and the agreement that we have with H E A and the district. And, um, if there are new working conditions that haven't been addressed, um, that's where, that's where we would want to be very careful. So, yes, we could. There's a risk with that. And, and I would just reiterate that our goal is to start these conversations immediately. I, I, we had our first conversation today. So, um, and we received the letter today. So our goal is to have these conversations and get this problem solving started immediately, uh, so that we don't bump up against that.
Jackie and then Mark.
Do we, can somebody remind me, the survey that was sent to the staff about returning to work? I don't know. I, I don't think it was when we did. I think it was one that the, one that the unions did. Um, do we have those metrics somewhere? I mean, I, I think I'll look them up, but I just didn't know if somebody here remembered what that was.
Mike, would you like me to answer that one?
Sorry.
No problem. So there, actually Jackie, I think if you recall, the summer we had Jill and, uh, both Moyness and Jill shared that there was a survey that H E A had sent out. And then H R, along with benefits and our risk management, uh, department, sent out a survey to see if people were able to come back to work. And when we completed that, uh, survey, we had staff, about two hundred and fifty staff that said that they, um, would maybe impacted by COVID or family needs or things like that. And as we were starting our journey of looking at, uh, our pre K two, pre K three, we had about fifty-eight licensed staff, about sixty altogether, uh, just initially that we were looking at that needed, uh, an interactive process of some kind. And as we're kind of peeling away the layers and looking at limited in-person, um, I think we had maybe two or three licensed staff, uh, that came forward, uh, in regards to moving our E L and students sped WIPI needs. And then probably had maybe about a handful of classified staff that, um, met with during this time as we looked at WIPI. So, um, that's the information I have from the H R lens, uh, in our data. The data that A, uh, H E A holds is one that they've, um, kind of shared some brief information with, I think, in our updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark?
Uh, ninety to a hundred and fifty days. Do we even have a hundred and fifty days left in the academic calendar? Can't imagine we even have that many.
I believe those are calendar days, but again, it's, um, so we've need, I, I believe those are calendar days. And, um, again, our goal is to, our goal is to get this wrapped up as soon as possible through problem solving with the, with the association. So, and I'm, I'm really hopeful that we can do that. I think, um, both H S D and H E A and, uh, you know, we're, we're both going into this as an opportunity to get clarification on a number of issues that people have been wondering about. And I, I'm very hopeful that we can do that.
So I understand that the arrow graphic is not linear, but the previous version, so does this supersede the previous version? And we keep talking about five weeks and there are five sections. So I, I understand that maybe it's not linear and that, but the previous version had like week one, week two, week three, week four, week five. Is that no longer the case?
It's pretty much, it's the same. It just takes away the specificity. It is linear. It's not scientific. I don't want to be misquoted here, Mark.
Sure. Okay.
It's, this would be like putting together the steps that would be necessary for us to feel good about coming back with staff and students.
And sort of, uh, what does day one of the most left portion of the arrow look like? So when we get, we get county metrics on the Friday, I think, right?
Usually Monday late or Tuesday.
Monday later, Tuesday. So-
Meeting with the, with Washington County, for example, today. And so they were giving us coaching on, hey, are we gonna turn this around and look better next week and be talking about going to school? And they said, no, we're gonna be looking over two hundred K day and we're going in the wrong direction. So day one of this would be us having some sort of favorable metrics and having a conversation with our local health authority leaders.
So the, the, the metrics are November seventh, but they don't discuss them until them, okay, the Monday. Gotcha. So is it really a five and a half week plan? So if we actually made the metrics on Tuesday of any given week, would day one be that Wednesday or would day one be the following Monday?
I think this is more general than that. I, I wouldn't commit to a number of days that this plan would take to execute. I think we'd use common sense to figure out, okay, where are we? How solid is our plan logistically, given the, the metrics we're looking at and what's possible? And then we'd work with our staff, this first couple of weeks, then communicate with families second or third week, and then create those, the green arrow where we're really getting on the ground and looking at how to set up school and how to bring kids back. So, uh, five weeks is a guess.
To the, okay, so five weeks is a guess. Okay. Thanks. Uh, I guess my last question for now in this particular block. If we, so I think what we're being asked to decide is whether or not, uh, three through twelve would stay in distance only until the end of the semester, which is January twenty something?
Twenty eight.
Right. Twenty eighth. And then K through two, we, if the metrics become favorable, we would evaluate the situation between now. So I guess my, so I, as long as I'm accurate in that, then my, my question then becomes, if we, if we agree to that tonight, when is the next time we evaluate three through twelve? As far as the opportunity, you know, if the metrics, if the metrics miraculously got better and the governor said, wow, this is great. That Pfizer vaccine was awesome and everybody suddenly had it. Let's go ahead and go where our five-week plan begin as soon as that. So are, are we always going to wait for semester breaks to make these decisions? So if we, if we say they're staying out this semester, when will we discuss first day of second semester?
If, if a miracle occurred, we would be having a conversation on December fourteenth about communicating to our community that there is, we're down to fifty per hundred thousand and that it's looking very favorable that we could bring back students K, uh, pre K through two in the middle of January, which would allow us to get several weeks of data that shows that we were safe and that kids are thriving. And then we would consider bringing back students in grades three, four, five, six at the semester. And then we'd be thinking about bringing kids back at secondary level a few weeks after that, once we prove that that's working well. So what, what we're being coached to do with our local health authority is to establish a small group of kids who go back, starting with the youngest and then increment, incrementally and thoughtfully bring back groups of students after that. If you're doing the math, you'll notice that it would take a, it would take a small miracle to get that trend going back in, um, Washington to be even having that conversation. And so like Mike said, the date that you can assume to hear from us likely to cancel the plan to bring back students, K, pre K two would be on December fourteenth, fifteenth and then-
Is that a board meeting? Do we have a board meeting around then? Probably.
We have one on the eighth and then what we would look at is the metrics that following Monday. And we would say to ourselves, are we down to in the yellow or the green zone? And then if we're not, we would announce to families that we're going to postpone that plan. And likely that would put us to considering, uh, pre K through two at the beginning of the second semester at the earliest, just given the number of weeks and holidays between then and then.
Yeah, I, I, I think just as we talked about before, I think most of us are reluctant as educators or I'm not even that. Uh, I guess I didn't teach in college, but yeah, so, uh, um, as educators are unlikely to want to question a public health expert. But, but I'm just trying to gauge, you know, as soon as, as soon as the numbers are good enough, you know, to meet the state requirement to go back, you know, how, how nimble can we be in that? So that, that's really the, the heart of my question. Yeah.
And, and Mark, I, I think so, maybe if I give an example, that would be helpful. Let, let's say that the metrics, uh, really improved, uh, the first of March and we, we started that process to come back. We wouldn't, we wouldn't just say that the whole year is going to be in distance learning at that point. We can transition back before a semester break. And again, we would, we would likely look for where, where there's a natural break. Maybe there's a nine-week grading period, if that makes sense, but, but we would, we would look logical spot to come back.
Before I move over to a comment, um, from Martin, I also just wanted to ask a question about how are we, um, working across other, with other districts in our same county? We know that there's a lot of, um, teachers that, you know, or staff that are in our district, but maybe their children are in a different district or vice versa. And so there needs to definitely be some coordination. I'm wondering what the conversation, um, has been around that coordination between districts.
So we meet every week with, uh, Washington County School Districts. And, um, one of the questions I was going to answer at the end that I just had on one of the slides is what are other districts doing? And, um, almost across the board, everyone is taking this, a very similar tact. Now, they may have the ability to go K three or they may have the ability to, um, you know, maybe those grade levels would shift a little bit. But in large part, people are start, would start with primary when it's safe to do so. They would increase limited in-person, uh, and then they would, they would cut her, um, at this time. Or, excuse me, the first semester for the remaining grades at this time. Those conversations all the time. I might talk to the leadership of those districts several times a week. So we will continue to collaborate with each other on these decisions.
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just kind of wanted to take a minute and share with, with everybody what's in my head. Because there's kind of disparate, uh, influences that we feel, um, you know, as a board member, we get a lot of emails and there's, there's a, um, quite a considerable group of people who really want to get back into school. Um, and there's quite a considerate, uh, group of people who really are very concerned about going back to school. So I think in terms of what I'm hearing as a board member is kind of- So I think in terms of what I'm hearing as a board member is kind of everything. Everything's coming at us and everybody's right, um, you know, in on that regard. So it is, it is kind of hard to discern which is a good path because everybody's right in in their particular concern. Another uh factor was some weeks ago, the governor uh released some new criteria for going back to school, which sort of implied that they were loosening up on getting K twelve back in the classroom. And I think a lot of people in the community really reacted to that. You know, a lot of people pointed out to me the board action that the Lake Oswego School District took. And very shortly thereafter, the governor came out with some guidance that sort of implied that there was tremendous pressure to get kids back in school, get our students back in school. And so I think a lot of members of the community heard that and sort of created an expectation that okay, COVID nineteen is kind of a known enemy at this point, so let's, you know, just confront it head on with all the things that we know we can do about hand washing and covering your cough and wearing a mask and social distancing. It's not the giant mystery it was back in March. And so you put all that together in some people's minds eye, and it sort of leads you to believe that that there's momentum towards getting students back in the classroom. And I say all that, not not where I am at all, but I think as a board member, I I sort of sensed that um school of thought out there. But really, I think the governor's metrics about getting kids back, students back in the classroom was really for parts of the county, the state that aren't in our situation. So what we all have to remind ourselves is we are in a county that is got very troubling metrics and they're going in the wrong direction and rapidly getting worse. In fact, just today, the governor put us in a two week pause category along with Multnomah County, so. Any sensibility that we should just get kids, get students back in the classroom really has to be checked by just the reality of our of our situation with respect to COVID nineteen. And I think that's the sensibility that uh presents when you talk to um our teachers. They're very, 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 and rightfully so, concerned about being asked to come into an environment where they're gonna be exposed. And so that weighs uh on me heavily as well. And um, you know, I think it's fair to say that certainly for me, and I think everybody on this call, that uh we all want to get our students back in the classroom. But it's that just has to be done in a safe manner. And and I, once again, want to endorse um the H S D leadership team. We've had a number of board meetings that were extra. And that's also that the the executive leaders of the of the district could come out in a very public way and say, this is what we're thinking. We're doing some planning. We're doing some talking. We're dialed in on the metrics. But, you know, we're just not gonna go out and and do anything that's not supported by the metrics. And I commend that. So at the end of the day, I'm really on board with uh the very thoughtful process that the district has. The very careful uh attention that's paid to the metrics and the actual state of the virus in Washington County in our in our area. So the continued um checking in with the health professionals and be huge in terms of the decisions we make. I just wanted to state that publicly. That's that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Is there any other questions here? Should we come? Do we still have some more slides?
Yeah, the next slides are just a recap of the recommendations from Mike and then a couple of of uh next steps.
Okay, let's do that.
All right. So I think you're aware of the recommendations at this point. At three through twelve would remain in a distance learning through the end of semester one. Uh, we continue to prepare for the possibility of pre K through two uh returning. Um, again, that's going to take metrics uh turning around. That's also going to um, we're going to need to consider the breaks in the calendar where that's where that's correct. And with a communication in mid-December regarding main year of the semester. And then the other goal is to, of course, um, increase the number of students in limited in person in a in a safe manner. So those really are the recommendations. And Kelly, would you advance, please? All right, um, I think I've actually uh covered most of these. I, we talked about how staff members are feeling. There's a general concern about uh safety and what are the procedures and processes that are going to be in place to um that take into account not only student but staff safety. So I would say that is you know, that that's the number one thing we hear about. We have staff members that are on each end of that spectrum. We have people that are ready to come back immediate. We have other people that are very concerned. And that, a lot of that comes down to the um to the personal circumstances of each staff member. We really do believe, though, that by engaging in this process um with H E A and H C U and having these conversations that the problem solving that takes place will make people feel much more comfortable. Um, I think it'll just add some clarity and get some information out there that is going to increase the comfort level. Um, I've, I mentioned what the other Washington County districts are doing. And um I was asked a question, um, Erica and I were talking earlier this week about how is comprehensive distance learning going? And um how would we compare what's happening now uh to what was happening at this time last year? And I've asked, it's a little early, unfortunately, to give you a great answer, but I've asked Dale to um just uh share some information with you around this question.
So as many of you know, um quarter one grades ended last week, and so um they're published and sort of out, but haven't had the time to crunch them. But in general, uh when we looked at the midterm, and then I've spoken to a few principals to kind of verify what we see is probably not surprising. Um, our students who are able to attend regularly and are engaged are doing really well. There is more success with math, which we're really excited about than what we were expecting because math is really difficult online. But I think um we have some really strong P L Cs working in our math department, so I think that's helping. Um, and then we still see disproportionate uh success, especially with our students of color or emerging bilinguals and our students with special needs who are able professional learning communities. Thank you, Jackie. Groups of teachers working together to plan together. Thank you. So we still see some disproportionate um success or lack of success uh with our students of color or emerging bilinguals and our students with special needs. And so um, you know, it just reiterates the need to uh try to work collaboratively with our union and with our community and hopefully get our kids back as soon as possible.
All right, if we can advance one slide. All right, uh here's, here's where we basically are. Yeah, um, we have the time for the board to discuss, and then we would ask that you make a decision on this issue.
I did just have a follow-up question in regards to, especially when we're seeing that um the disproportionate um impact. Is that um? I guess, or maybe you can't answer yet until you've kind of looked into the numbers, but is that different than what we would see in a regular school year, or is it a a bigger percentage? Because I know that we already have disproportionate numbers, so how much different is it in C D L?
So I I think um what we would expect and what we have seen is um a lot of our students, or not a lot, but many of our students are taking care of siblings at home, cousins at home. They have family responsibilities at home at the high school level. We have more kids working. The financial strain on families is pretty great. There's been quite a few families who have um had lost wages due to lost jobs, what have you. So we see more students working. So I think um there's a great, I I have to commend our uh middle schools and high schools. I think we have really tight systems for connecting with our kids, maximizing our grad coaches. The Wednesday opportunity to reach out has been really beneficial. But there's still a group of kids that we're not being able to serve. So I I think um we're expecting a little more concern in the area of disproportionality as we analyze the scores uh at the end of first quarter.
Um, Mike, if you want to look at uh Lisa's comment, we don't have a suggestive motion. So we need some clarity on what that would sound like. Oh, there we go.
I think it could be pretty simple. It could be something like that. And uh if it brings greater comfort, then you could reference the three bullet points.
And then a comment um from Jackie and a question from Martin.
Um, I do want to thank Mike and the cabinet and staff. Wow, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of continuing work. I'm, I'm really nervous about what our prediction, the predictions are about seventy percent increasing cases over the holidays. And I, I know that everyone in this meeting's goal is to get our students back to school as quickly as we can to in-person learning. And I appreciate that we're taking um the precautions necessary because I, you know, my concern is is safety for our students, our staff, our community. But that also falls into the mental health category of our students. And I know that there there are students out there that are suffering and are most vulnerable students. So I'm, I'm excited to see increasing the number of students that are gonna participate in the limited in-person instruction. I think that that is um going to be one of our most important programs to 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 increase. Um, especially since I personally don't see us meeting the metrics we need to be in person. Um, honestly, anytime soon, I would, I would be surprised, and I can eat my words, if we go back before the end of the year, before next fall. That's just me um being cautious, because I'm very cautious about about the safety of our students and staff. So um, but I want to thank everybody for the work you've done. And Casey, I, I know you're getting pressure for to open playgrounds and activities and fields and and I know you're working hard on that. And so thank you for for taking that on and um for pushing for that. That that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, earlier in the meeting, we discussed um the cohort, that's the the twenty of forty who have accepted the invitation to come in. They they meet the criteria of highly impacted students who could not benefit from constant learning. And that's an interesting um uh group. What if we coming out of the sort of apply that logic to people, to the the students? And it seems like we're increasingly understanding who isn't uh thriving or even moderately succeeding. How about if we applied that logic to kids who have an F or kids who aren't on track to graduate or kids who can't read at third grade or any one of a number of key criteria that we know are essential? And and invite them to come back. And maybe why we wind up with of our twenty thousand students, two to three thousand that is in this uh cohort that really C D L just isn't working, comprehensive distance learning isn't working.
One of the things that we had the opportunity to do this last week is to have conversations with our building principals and to talk about who are those groups that you're, who are those students that you're most concerned about right now? And so we have started those conversations to get a greater a focus and to really dial in on the students that are being impacted in a pretty negative way. So those, those conversations have begun. And uh really, it is a matter of putting a criteria to that and then making decisions. Um, those are also conversations that we are continuing to engage in with H E A um as well in in terms of the number of staff that it would take to meet the, meet the students that we're talking about. Uh, but those conversations are taking place right now. Well, there's a, well, sorry, Erica, just one, one more quick thing. Um, one of the things that I think is probably fairly obvious to everybody here, um, there is just a wide variety of um opinions on should school be open right now? Should we, should we not open until next year? And and really, um, literally every day in my, in my email, I will have two very opposing, well, I wish it were two. I would have very opposing uh emails that, um, you know, well, some people want us to come back immediately and other people say, you've got to wait. It's just not safe. And so um because of that, you know, that is, that is something that's been occurring since this entire thing began in March. And because of that, we keep driving back to the metrics that are set by the state and the health professionals, and we'll continue to do that. I guess more than anything, I just wanted to acknowledge that um this, this is a difficult decision. And we know that um as these decisions are made and are communicated, that we're going to have a portion of our community that um are just not very satisfied with those. And I I wish we were in a situation where we could make everybody happy. But with the diversity of thought on this and the different opinions that exist out there in the community, that's just not going to be possible.
Thank you, Mark.
I move to readop the recommendations that have been outlined this evening.
So it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Lisa.
Will we have discussion time at the end or, yeah, is this the only time for discussion or will we be doing discussion time after we vote?
This is the only time I had in the agenda for discussion. So uh if you wanna let me know on the chat if somebody is wanting to make a discussion. I see Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I look at this uh three options, point one, grades three through twelve uh remain in comprehensive distance learning. That seems to me uh not difficult. Uh, the third point, increase the number of students participating in limited in-person instruction. That that seems to be prudent, and and my question earlier sort of encouraged us to to consider expanding that to to kids who are failing, to kids who aren't going to graduate um to to the that we talked about three buckets of kids, uh poor grades, poor attendance, um E S L, uh and some other uh of our demographics that that the district is aware of are are not thriving. So I would encourage us to expand the limited in-person instruction. So point three, bottom line, and totally on board. The difficult point for me in terms of a yes, no vote is is the middle bullet point. Continue preparing for the possibility of students in grades pre K through two returning to in-person learning in mid-January. So the metrics really don't support us in fact doing that, but I I just want to highlight for everybody, what I mean by a yes vote for this is that I'm emphasizing the word preparing for the possibility. I don't, I don't want anybody to construe my yes vote for this to be I'm on board with kids, you know, based on the facts that we know today going back to school in January. And I think it's been clear, if you really listen to the whole discussion, nobody's thinking that. Nevertheless, sometimes a yes, no vote can be, can be taken out and extrapolated that, you know, the vote was to send kids back to school in January. And I, in this discussion point, I just wanted to flesh out certainly what my intent is for a yes vote with this is to, is to prepare for the possibility. Uh, and I think what I've heard that those preparations are very inclusive, uh most particularly with our bargaining units and uh the senior leaders of the administration in talks and informed by all the metrics. So given all that, um, I I intend to vote yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Lisa and then Mark.
Thank you. Uh, I just, uh, sorry for talking again. I'll be very uh brief. I just um, I know that there's a lot of uh interest from staff and also from parents in this topic. And so we've got a lot of folks who are um watching to find out what's gonna happen. I just want to make clear for everyone that we do have um quite a lot of varying opinions among our our board members on this issue. And we do have um folks like me who have little kids in distance learning, just like so many parents who are emailing us. Uh, and I just, I want you to know that we are getting your emails and we care and we know that it's really hard. Uh, and uh if I could vote a different way and make all the kids go back to school tomorrow, and that's absolutely what I would do one hundred percent. My kids are ready to go see their friends in person, and that is what is best for them. And I think that is the absolute top priority that we have before anything else is educating our students who need to see their teachers in person. However, we do have to follow the metrics that are set down from the state. And our metrics are not going in the right direction, and that's a fact, and we can't change it. And so we have to follow those things. And then also, we have amazing staff who have to be safe when they come to educate our kids, because if we don't do it right, then they won't be able to be there for very long, and that's gonna harm our kids because they're not gonna have those familiar faces. And so there's a lot of work going into this to make it happen as soon as possible. And so there's a lot of work going into this to make it happen as soon as possible and be as smooth as possible. And I just want to make sure that, that everyone watching knows that. We, some of us really want to go back right this second, but we, we can't. Um, and, um, and we're doing our best to make it happen as soon as we can. So just wanted to, to share that.
Thank you, Lisa. Mark and then Jackie.
Yeah, I would say building on that, that, you know, uh, we all understand that in-person instruction is what's best. Otherwise, that's just right. We would, but, but I, um, I, I trust Dr. Dean Sidlenger. I trust the Oregon Health Authority. I, I, and I trust that they're looking at everything possible to do things as safely as possible. So if you have a fundamental distrust in the medical experts who are advising us on this, that's a different situation. I, I trust them, that, that they understand the situation we're in and that they understand that as soon as we can safely get students in classrooms, we should be doing that. I think Gil, there's, there's some evidence that, uh, K3 students being in school may actually slow the spread, uh, in a community because, uh, we're providing, we're doing health checks, health screenings at the door that they wouldn't get at home or wherever they're going during the day. And that contact tracing is much easier when you know where everybody is. So I'm sure that Oregon Health Authority is considering that as they establish these metrics. Our metrics are not going in the right direction. When we get those down, let's get students in, in the building. And, you know, I'll go back to what I was saying eight months ago. Gosh, uh, you know, finding creative ways to solve the problems that maybe are outside the box. So if we have, like Martin indicated, another group of students that really are going to need that limited in-person instruction to get over the finish line, find, uh, those ones that are willing to risk in-person instruction with teachers that pair them with teachers that are willing to provide that in-person instruction, right? This is a pandemic. It's a state of emergency. It's not, um, it's not go according to, things are going according to plan. It's a state of emergency, and you have to put things on the table in a state of emergency that you might not normally consider during normal times. So, um, I understand everybody's reluctance to, uh, systemically force people into unsafe situations. And I'm not saying that a classroom is unsafe. Like I said, there's evidence that it might be more safe. But everyone is in this position where they have to make some of these decisions for what's best for their family and what's best for themselves. So if you have a teacher that really just has a, a desire to be in a classroom, maybe we find a way to do that outdoors, right? Like I've been saying for a while, one day a week outside on a playground is probably is, has some benefit. So just again, I, I, I appreciate all the work of the staff. Get creative with the problem solving. I think if the metrics come down, we can have our five-week plan to get back in. I worry the metrics aren't going to come down. I worry that things are going to get worse and that we should be finding creative ways to address this. And some things that might not be acceptable in normal times might be acceptable when we're under a state of emergency.
Thank you, Mark. Jackie and then Shan.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate this board's differing opinions. And I also really like the idea of increasing, um, limited in-person instruction to include, um, the students that both Martin and Mark commented on. Um, I think that that might be, um, a good alternative to, um, returning to in-person, since that doesn't seem to be in our near future. So I would just encourage us to, to look at those students and see what we can do to increase, um, that program.
Jackie, Shan.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I think that the decision that we're making tonight is really just a continuum of decisions we've had to make since March. The number of special work sessions that we've had to have, the number of, um, ongoing discussions we've had to have with county partners, state partners, health authority, um, HEA and HCU and family members and students. You know, I think that these discussions will have to continue. And so the, you know, my vote tonight is, is really, I, I think, Martin, you have mentioned, preparing for the possibility. I think that is really the key point. You know, yes, we can vote, um, in favor of this, but really it's, it's, it's preparing for the possibility of students to return. Given that the most important thing that we're looking at is really the, the safety of our students and also the safety of our, of our staff and our teachers and our classified, um, staff who are on the ground really day in and day out, who's having the physical interactions with our students. And so, you know, whatever it is and whatever plan that we have in place, I want to make sure that we are first and foremost prioritizing the safety of our students and staff. Because this, you know, these are lives that are on the line. And I, and so I think that, you know, yes, I do intend to vote yes tonight. But I think that my yes vote is really a yes for ongoing, um, discussion around this, especially given how we don't have a playbook in terms of, of, um, how things are going to go. We don't, we, there's no way we can project what things are going to look like a month from now or even two months from now. But what we can do is really lean on the partnerships that we've built on. And Mike, you and your team have been incredible, working with, with our county partners and our state partners and really leaning on, uh, the metrics to guide, um, our decisions and really inform our practice. And so I really appreciate, uh, the intentionality in that. And so I do have confidence, um, in our team's decision to, uh, to recommend this moving forward. But I do also want to say that, um, I would love, uh, to see how things go with even the bargaining team with H, with HEA and HCU. Because we need, we need the support of, of them as well. This is just as much a partnership with the district as with, you know, um, the staff and even our parents at home. So, yeah, these, these are some really impossible times to navigate. But I appreciate the partnership and the willingness that everyone has to put the safety of our students and staff first and foremost.
Thank you, Shan. Yadira.
Yeah, I, I feel good about the decision that we're going to make. I am, um, a little sad that we weren't able to include, uh, third graders in that, um, first group. And I do like the idea of including those other groups that Martin, uh, mentioned in the limited, um, in-person instruction, um, once we can. I, I've heard a lot tonight about, you know, ensuring that, that we return, um, once it's safe too. But I mean, I guess I don't want to have like a false sense of security. It's not ever going to be safe. We can, um, always eliminate, well, we could reduce the risk, I think, is a better idea of looking at things as much as possible because COVID is out there. So even with all the measures that, um, that we are going to follow as far as the cleaning and cohorts and masks, it's still not 100% sure. So there always is some, you know, risk to that. So, um, I feel like that's always something for parents to consider too. Just because, you know, there have been outbreaks in other schools that have, you know, been following, um, the recommendations. So just making sure that we, um, reduce the risk as much as possible, but still knowing that there is that risk.
Thank you, Yadira. And I just want to, before I add my comments also, just want to check with our student reps. And, um, I know we don't have any discussion time at the end, but if they have any thoughts, um, they would like to share.
Sorry, I guess I have something missed. Um, obviously, this isn't how I thought my senior year would look. But, um, I'm really glad that we are taking the precautions to make sure that our community stays safe.
Thank you, Maya. Ilham or Devlin, do you have any comments?
Um, sorry about that. I, uh, I don't, sorry, I don't really have anything that I'd like to add. I really like that we, nothing but support, really. I like the fact that we're thinking through this decision. We're not trying to rush anything. And, but ultimately it is right. Things aren't going to be perfect. We aren't ever going to have like a perfect situation to get back in. But right now with the fact that we have a spike, it's not really responsible for us to try and get back into school right now. Other than that, I really, you know, I, I like everything that we're putting forward at the very least. I like all the recommendations. I don't have anything else to say other than that.
Thank you, Devlin. And Ilham's mic isn't working, but she doesn't have any additional comments. So I also just would like to thank our staff, um, for constantly, um, looking at ways that we can have, um, offerings for our students, for our families. And even during this pandemic, I think we are trying to find, you know, different solutions. And I really do appreciate, um, the activities coming online today, or starting those conversations and the limited in-person instruction and figuring out what are students that are most vulnerable? Um, and how do we get, um, some additional support for them? I understand that this isn't the best solution. And I think that this is us moving from that reactive space that we were in March to trying to be more proactive and finding solutions that work for our district. We know that our, our partners and our unions are, are really instrumental in making this a success whenever we're able to move into that. And that we want to, we want to make sure that we're in step with each other and that we're supporting each other as we move forward with our plans and we support our students. That's the only way that we're going to be successful if we're doing this together. And I truly do believe that all of us here, all of us that serve in this board and, um, our staff and our partners are really child-centered and wanting to do the best for our children. At the same time, we want to be responsible. We want to listen to experts and listen to the reality of which we're living in right now in our county. And I think what's, what's more, I think for a lot of people that are listening to us that this is, this is really a call to action for our community, that we need to get our numbers down and we need to do the best that we can to follow all the guidance that helps us keep those numbers down so that we can get our kids back in school. There's not one person in here that doesn't desire that more. But we need everybody's help, everyone in our community to help us do that. So I am hoping that, uh, seeing this and seeing that we're on pause for two weeks, inspires people to really, um, I guess we're kind of, um, helping each other, you know, get, get those metrics down. I think the other thing that I just also wanted to, uh, I think Mike especially is for coordinating that work along with all of our partnering districts and ensuring that we're in constant communication. That is really also going to be something that is going to be a really huge lift to ensure that all the other districts and us as well are in constant communication and aligned. Because we have so many parents and students that, you know, are either in one district or a parent is teaching in another. And we need to be really well-coordinated in order for this to be successful. So thank you so much for all the work that you're doing in that space and to our community that, that every single one of us, we are all reading your emails. We read everything that you sent. We know that it's hard, that not one single solution is going to meet everybody's needs. And, and that's difficult for us. It's a hard truth and something that we're, we are grappling with. But that be assured that we are doing our very best. And we know that right now that is not meeting every, everyone's need. And that's really hard, but, but we are trying. And we are wanting, um, to continue to do better and to serve our students any way that we can. So we are listening and we will continue to do the best that we can. So thank you, everybody. So with that comment, if our board members would please, uh, mention your IRN votes or abstain in the chat. Yes, votes are Mark Watson, Martin Granham, Jackie Sprouse, Yadira Martinez, Lisa Allen, Shan Kim, and myself. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. If you'd advance one slide, we can just go over next steps, and then that will really wrap things up for us. And we have, uh, started to prepare communication earlier today in the hope that be able to get that out tomorrow. So we will go ahead and make sure that we do that. We'll get the communication out to all of our families tomorrow in a, in a very widespread way through our typical channels. Do know that in the background, we continue, uh, facilities crew continues to work to prepare classrooms. And we know that we are going to return at some point, and we're, we're working on that each, each day. Kind of, I think, mentioned this earlier, if not this meeting, a previous meeting, that accommodations for, uh, staff that, that need those, those conversations will be ongoing. And we'll make sure that we work to engage in that process with them. I continue to, um, look how, look and see how the instructional delivery that we're, we're in for CDL right now, and how that's working for our students. And we'll continue to monitor that and gather data and then continue, of course, to prepare for in-person learning, the return to that. Ongoing health metrics, we're going to, we review those every week, and we're in conversation around those every week. And we will also continue to provide updates to everybody listed there, board, students, staff, and families. So really, those are our next steps. And just, uh, one more reminder there. And board members, if you could get your videos over to Justin on Beth's team, that would be helpful for us. And we can get that project wrapped up. And with that, I'd just like to express my appreciation for the thoughtfulness that you engaged in, uh, just on this conversation. Very complex, uh, very complex issue, obviously, with a lot of varying opinions. And I appreciate your, um, your thorough nature on this.
Thank you, Mark. With that, our board session is over. Thank you.